I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Town of Groton Select Board on Monday, August 26th. We are just coming out of an executive session and heading into our regular meeting. We will have announcements and review of the agenda, followed by a public comment period. We will then have the Town Manager's Report, which includes our agenda schedule, an update on the Tribe Board meeting this morning, talking about fiscal '21, an update on the fourth quarter financial status, closing out fiscal '19. We will talk about our calendar year '19 board goals. We will have an update from the Prescott Oversight Committee. We will consider appointing Ray Capes to the Complete Streets Committee, and we will potentially consider ratifying amendments to the agreement between the Town of Groton and IAFF Local 4879. That's all before 7:15, at which point we will meet in joint section with the Groton members of the School Committee to appoint someone to a one-year vacancy that will go until the spring election. Under Other Business, we will discuss our packets of information that we get and whether to publish those in advance. We will discuss the Select Board email address, and then in our packets was a letter that I had drafted to the Water Commissioners regarding the iron and manganese. We can talk about that or some version of that. We then have all of our ongoing issues. We have liaison reports, and we have one set of minutes to approve. So, announcements?
If I may, I'd like to take items six and seven at the beginning before the 7:15, get those out of the way, and then we can go right into the School Committee joint session and then back to the ... because I don't think I'm going to get through the Tribe Board update in ten minutes.
No, I don't think so.
I'll try, but I don't see that happening.
Any other announcements from both? Okay. Comments or questions from the public? All right.
With regards to the item number six, the Complete Streets Committee has a vacancy. They're asking that Ray Capes be appointed to the committee with a term to expire June 30th, 2020. I'd ask the Board to consider making that appointment this evening.
Yes, John.
Ray Capes is a former elected member of the Planning Board, where he did, in my judgment, a very, very good job. He's also been a rep for the Planning Board while not an elected member, to one or more of the Monticujusets Regional Planning Groups, study teams. So, I highly recommend it.
Okay. Are you making that motion? John, do you want to turn that into a motion?
I move that we appoint Ray Capes to the Complete Streets Committee for a period of, what, till?
June 30th, 2019.
Ah, 20. Till, until June 30th, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So, the Board had an executive session earlier this evening to review with me and the Fire Chief proposed amendments to the union agreement between the town and local 4879, IAFF, to implement...
Which is the Fire Department.
Fire Union, yes, thank you. To implement 24-hour shifts. As the Board is aware, we're planning on going to 24/7 coverage effective September 16th, 2019. In order to do that, we needed to meet with the union and hammer out some of the contract language that directly affected the implementation of those shifts, because right now we don't have those shifts. We operate on 12-hour shifts, not 24-hour shifts. So, we had two meetings with the union. We discussed the various changes, and we came to an agreement on all of the wording changes within the contract. The one area that I wanted to point out to the ... a lot of them are just administrative changes on how vacation accrues and things like that that doesn't affect the budget. The one thing that does affect the budget, but we did budget for it when we went to the town meeting to hire those two additional firefighters, was the way we pay holiday pay. Right now, they get paid 12 hours of holiday pay at time and a half when they work the holiday. Now, a holiday is 24 hours, so we will be paying 24 hours of holiday pay instead of 12. The impact on the budget over the next 18 months, less than 18 months, about 16 months, from September of 2019 through the end of the contract, which is June 30th, 2021, will be approximately $8,000. But that is the only financial impact of the changes of the 24-hour shifts, but again, we accounted for that in the budget when we went to town meeting. The other thing that happened was, in the contract, in the union, is a position of captain within the Fire Department. The captain's position became vacant recently, and the way the union contract reads, only lieutenants with three or more years of experience are eligible to apply for the promotion. The two union employees who were eligible for the position chose not to apply for it, thereby leaving it vacant, which created an issue because the captain's position worked Monday through Friday, eight to four, to allow us to have four people on during the day, which was the way we discussed 24-hour shifts with the public. So, what we did is we went to the union and we asked them to give up some of the duties of the captain and allow us to create the position of deputy fire chief. The union has agreed to that. So, we will be filling a position, the fire chief, as strong chief, who's the appointing authority, will be filling the position of deputy fire chief. That will become effective as close to September 16th as possible. He's going through the search right now for that position. The pay rate will be somewhere between $100 and $105,000 annually. I will tell you, the captain with overtime in fiscal '18 earned, or fiscal '17 earned $107,000, and fiscal '18 earned $108,000, and in fiscal '19, while the position was vacant for quite some time, earned $97,000 with overtime. So, paying $100 to $105 has no financial impact on the budget because that's what we're paying now, and the deputy fire chief's position will not get overtime. So, the union has agreed to allow us to fill that position of deputy fire chief with the duties of the captain, to work that Monday through Friday, eight to four hour shift. So, that said, I would ask the Select Board this evening to consider ratifying two things. One, the wording changes in the contract to allow for the implementation of a 24-hour shift, and the second would be to authorize the side letter creating the position of deputy fire chief. Those are the two votes I'd ask the Select Board to consider taking in public this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Can they be one vote for both things?
No, I would like two separate votes, please, because one's an agreement, one's a side letter, if that's okay with the Board.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion to first approve the wording changes in the contract.
I'd be happy to make that motion. I move that we approve the amendments to the agreement between the Town of Groton and the IAFF Local 4879. That would be the Professional Firefighters of Groton for the contract period July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? Do we need to do roll call both on these, right?
Not on this, no.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I heard that unanimously. I would say we'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum number one, to create the deputy chief position.
Yes, I move that we vote to approve the side letter, is that what we're calling this, to create the position of deputy fire chief.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just want to say, I think that our ... this negotiation went very smoothly, and I think we're all very happy with the way that we're going to be able to implement 24/7 coverage on September 16th. Is that their, that's our target date? This is a big step for the town, and I think it bodes well that things went smoothly in the negotiation.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need to miss as well?
We still have a few minutes before 7:15, so I'd like to go through some of the ongoing issues, if that's all right with you.
Yep.
Allison?
Please.
And the Board. To give you an update on the senior center building project, we're still on target for October 22nd. Things have really progressed nicely. Doors are installed, windows inside are installed, painting is getting done, kitchen has been completely tiled, and equipment being installed in the kitchen, so we're very pleased with the way things are going. So, that project continues down a path of completion.
Can I just ask, October 22nd is the target date to begin using it?
Move in. Yes.
And do we have plans for some sort of public?
Kathy is working on that. I'm sure there will be huge announcements when it's ready to go.
A public open house to come and see it. It is going to be quite spectacular.
Correct. Yep. So, that, that's where we are with that. With regards to the Town Hall renovations, things have progressed quite incredibly since we met last. The Assessors' Office change with the window is just about done, really came out nice. I think it's exactly the way Jonathan and I hoped it would come out, so if you get a chance to walk by there tonight, take a look. We're waiting for two things to finish it, the glass window and the laminate for the countertop. And then that project, there's just some painting and some flooring stuff that has to be done as part of the rest of the Town Hall renovations, and then that will be done. So, we're quite pleased about that. They were working very diligently up here today, putting in the baseboard, filling holes in the wall, getting it ready for painting. I believe painting is going to commence tomorrow, hopefully, knock on wood. Painting should commence tomorrow. They did all of the wallboard and plastering on the first floor. I don't know if you had a chance to go down there and see it. That's coming along. That will also be painted. We're hoping to get the carpets installed over the next week or so, and hopefully Dawn and I will be moving back, and Patricia and Sarah will be moving into their, back to their offices next week, beginning part of next week, which we're really excited about. Trail of living is not for me. I just want you to point that out. But I don't know how Patricia, I think you like, you feel like, I can't wait to get back into the, into the Town Hall, but that, that's ongoing. The one area, the two remaining areas that are going to be a little bit delayed is, there was a two-week audit time on the counters for the kitchen downstairs, so those have been audited. We expect those to be in, in a couple of weeks. And then we are trying to figure out exactly when they're going to start installing the new flooring outside the two offices. I will tell you, they're going to start, we'll close Town Hall an hour early on Friday that weekend. They'll come in and they will work over the weekend, two consecutive weekends, to get the floors done, because what they have to do, not only install the floors, but then they have to sand and refinish all of the floors to get it to match as close as possible, all the way down to the stairs on both the first floor and the second floor. So, those are, that's the only delayed thing, but hopefully we're going to get everybody back into the building and those trailers out of the parking lot, I would say, within the next week and a half or two weeks, once it's all said and done. So, that renovation continues to go well. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I thought, I saw you put your hand up, John.
No, it appeared to me tonight, when I poked my head in, that all the electric power and network connections seemed to be in place, which is stuff that went behind those walls.
Yep. So, they did, they did a good job, and the plumbing work went really well also, so we're very, very pleased with the way things have, things have been going with that. It's a little slow, a little frustrating, but I would say between Rebuildex and Service Master, they've really done a good job serving us. And then Greg O'Sullivan, who did the work for us in the Assessors' Office, did a great job, too. And so, those projects are getting done, and hopefully by the end of September, people will come in and not even notice that anything had happened in Town Hall.
So, with the floors, you said it's going to take two weekends? Is that like just one weekend for one floor and one for the second, or there's two different applications?
I think putting the floor down and then sanding it, I don't think they're going to get it all done in one weekend, so I think, and then finishing it.
Right.
So, I think the first weekend is putting it down, sanding it, second weekend, finishing it.
So, it's going to be usable during?
It's going to be usable during that week, absolutely. That's the one question that we all asked, to make sure that the Town Hall can be used when that goes on, and the answer was yes.
Are they going to put only one coat?
I think there's two coats. It takes 24 hours to finish.
So, that's probably what drives the two weekends, and you being able to use the floor after the first weekend, because it will have the first layer of poly...
Correct. So, that's why it's two, two weeks.
Yeah, polyethylene.
So, miraculously, I finished those two updates, and it's 7:15, and I see the School Committee is here. If you guys want to come up to the, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry.
When the Town Hall renovations finish up, will you give us kind of a financial updating?
To let you know exactly what we spent, absolutely.
Thank you.
This is our third time together today. Very exciting. Jeff, how you been?
Good.
Very good, thank you. So, there is...
So, before we start, if I may call us to order, call the School Committee, it would be nice, right? School Committee to order for August 26th meeting, joint with Select Board.
So, there is a vacancy on the Regional School Committee. It is a three-year seat. The way this will work, when the Board decides, if the School Committee and the Board can come to an agreement on appointment tonight, whoever you appoint, there are two applicants, Peter Cronin and Ann Dolby. When the Board and the School Committee makes that appointment, it'll be through the May election, and then that person will have the opportunity, if they decide to, to run for the remaining two years on that seat. So, that's where we are. I see Peter's here. Is the other applicant here?
She could not attend. She had a prior engagement.
Okay. So, that's where we are, and I'll leave it up to the Board now to figure out what you want to do next.
So, I don't know, have you guys spoken with the candidates? Have you gotten more information than we had, or?
More so email than spoken. And email was pretty elaborate in regards to her background. That's been shared with everyone here. Pete, clearly, he's already served on the School Committee. He was on the School Committee when we were doing the audits in regards to negotiations. I think Mark actually served as well on those.
We're very closely with Peter, and enjoy the experience. He did a great job.
So, both very good candidates. We've just actually had a very short meeting, just to discuss it ourselves, and I can summarize and/or we can all individually speak about it, but where it's a one-year appointment is what we're discussing, and we're in a year where we have contract negotiations and we're still finalizing. Finishing out on that last leg of the audit and all those changes, having someone with prior experience with all of that is probably in a School Committee's best interest, taxpayer's best interest. So, our collective opinion was going with someone with experience for the one year, and whether Pete was to continue two years later, or Ann chose to go for two years then, or anyone else for that matter, you know, fantastic, but right now, we're filling a year slot.
All right. Very good. Questions, thoughts? Yeah, John?
I just want to ask Peter if work-wise and family-wise, are you going to have the time that you've put into, that you're going to have to put into it?
Yeah, grab the microphone, please.
Thank you. Since I started in the School Committee, I've had a fairly significant change in my professional life, now work out of my home office instead of living along the community. It's given me a lot of extra time to pursue other outside interests, so I have plenty of time to put to this.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'll get your name sometime. I'm Brian.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Since only Peter's here, I guess this is going to go to you. So, you chose not to run at the conclusion of your term last time, and now with this vacancy occurring, you've stepped up to the plate and put your name in. I guess my question for you is, why did you choose not to run for reelection? And then now you want this, you explained you have more time, but what was the rationale for not running again?
At the time, I had just completed a three-year term, including leading the collective bargaining team and leading the curriculum instruction assessment team while juggling a fairly long commute and heavy travel requirements for my job, and I was, I was starting to get burned out at the time, so I chose not to run. As I mentioned previously, my situation has changed fairly significantly since then. I've had a little time to recharge. I have vested interest in the continued success of the district, having been part of the Strategic Planning Committee, the Capital Plan, Technology Plan, the Selective Superintendent, feel strongly suited to help the School Committee continue their great work for the period of this interim assignment.
Thanks.
Yeah, Becky.
So, as I consider the two applicants, I guess the choice that we have is between someone who does have the experience, and that's always valuable, especially when you're in the middle of negotiations, but the person who had been elected was brand-new to the Board, and so the Board was going to be dealing with a brand-new person, and the other, the woman who stepped forward at this point, obviously is new to the School Committee role, but brings really quite a wealth of educational experience, reading her. I don't know her personally at all, but reading the letter of application. So, it's hard to, for me to necessarily say one is better, but I guess I, my inclination is that I think bringing new people in to government is a good thing, and so I don't want to, I don't want to discourage that from this woman, and I think at this point that is probably how all will fall.
So, for, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so just, you know, obviously, I'm not going to change your mind, but my, my opinion is, there's nine months here, so for this interim position, it's not a lot of time. When I was new to the School Committee, it seemed like it took at least 12 months to get up to speed on a lot of stuff. So, from that standpoint, having somebody who's been through that previously, who understands the regulations, the process, just helps to get up to speed faster, you know, if, and I agree with you, I think she's got impressive experience, brings that educational background from, you know, the educator side of things. And so, you know, I'd love to see her run in, in May or in the spring for the position because, and then have the two years to fill out the remainder of that term and, you know, potentially re-up again after that.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say very similarly, that to me, you know, a nine-month or a one-year vacancy, you really need someone who could hit the ground, kind of running. And in this case, I think the experience, much as I think Ann is a great candidate, the experience is what we need to make that interim a really active participant, so. Any other questions, concerns? All right.
This vote does have to be roll call.
Okay. And it's, we're like one joint committee at this point, so any one of us can make a motion and we can cross move a second.
Somebody makes it, somebody seconds it, and then you roll call.
Who would like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we appoint Peter Cronin to the vacancy on the Groton Dunstable Regional School Committee.
I'll second that motion.
All righty. Any further discussion? All right. We need you roll call. Manugian, aye.
Riley, aye.
Diggin', aye.
Pine, nay.
Geiger, aye.
Cubic, aye.
Marlena, aye.
Blanca, aye.
So, Peter, congratulations. There will be a letter or electronic transfer done in the Town Clerk's office first thing tomorrow morning, so before you serve on the School Committee, please go down and get sworn in by the Town Clerk. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, yeah.
All righty. Thank you, guys.
Shall we adjourn? Do you need the School Committee as a whole for any...
I think that's all we formally have. Of course, we'd love to see you stay and express opinions on everything.
I have a feeling we'll have some many joint meetings ahead, so I would introduce a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
That's fine.
Thank you. Have a good night. You, too. All righty. So, do we want to return back to the Town Manager's Report?
Yes. So, item number two, I set aside time this week to give the Board an update on the work of the so-called Tribe Board that has been working on preparation for the FY '21 budget. They met this morning, I think we met for about an hour and a half, and I've given you some information beforehand, and there's some more information I want to give you tonight that I sent out this afternoon. I will try not to make this too long.
Could you, excuse me, I'm sorry for interrupting. Could you just explain to all of us what the Tribe Board?
Yep. It's a committee, it's a, it's not a posted committee, but it is a group representing the Town's Select Board, the Town's Finance Committee, and the Groton Dunstable Portion School Committee, reps from Groton. So, sitting in the room today was Bud Robertson, representing the Finance Committee, Allison Manugian, representing the Select Board, Brian LeBlanc, and Marlena Gilbert, representing the School Committee, Sherry Kersey, who is the new school business manager, of course, Dr. Chesson, myself, and I invited the Finance Team this morning because we talked a lot about how we get to growth, and there's some numbers out there that I thought was very helpful. So, it was a very good meeting this morning. There was a lot of shared information. We went through a lot of different information. So, I want to just briefly go through some of the things we discussed this morning and give you an idea of where we're, where we're headed. And Allison, and Bud, and Finance Team, please feel free to jump in if I, if I miss anything.
Logistically, Mark, so the information you sent out to us after Tribe Board came in an email, has that been incorporated into the package?
That is in the packet. We will get to it, absolutely. It's all the same thing. So, this is how we calculate out the levy limit. I wanted to give an FY '20 update. New growth has, was originally estimated at $20 million. New growth now is at $27 million, and there is a main reason for that. The actual growth was about $18 million in new construction, commercial, personal property. There was another $11 million that came in, nine to $11 million that came in in growth because of a decision that the Board made with the Finance Committee two years ago to appropriate money to do a full measure and list in the community. We had said at the time that the Board and the Finance Committee approved it, and ultimately Town Meeting, that we would generate additional growth by doing that, because people that didn't pull building permits to finish their basements, put on decks, things like that. Well, he did it, he was supposed to take three years, they did it in 18 months, and we picked up a lot of growth this way. So, that's good news. That added $126,770 to, to, to the levy limit this year. And keep in mind, the levy limit now is 100, and the Town Meeting vote put the estimated levy surplus at $197,000. This is going to add another $126,000 to that, but we're going to take some back, and you'll see in a minute what. We also have to increase the excluded debt for fiscal year '20 by $70,393. That is to cover the band interest payments on the bands that the Board approved at your last meeting for the DPW garage and the library roof. Then, when you look at estimated receipts, you will see that the final, we estimated the Governor's number at $965. The final budget was $971, so the Legislature gave us more than the Governor designated, so there's $6,000 more dollars there, which is good news. So, then when we get into the actual budget, I'm proposing a couple of changes here on it. One, we're going to be looking to increase the general government budget at the fall Town Meeting for $20,000. That's to pay for improvements that the Board authorized and discussed when we brought the Department head to talk about our financial software, so we'll be looking for a $20,000 appropriation there. We also have to increase the debt service budget by that $70,000 that we're raising on the recap sheet for the, the interest payments on the excluded debt for the DPW roof. The Legislature actually increased the library offset by $500 to $18,527, but then they gave us money back on the, as, on the charity charges we had estimated $93,692, they were only taking $93,392. I think there was a typo somewhere, and that's probably what happened, and it got corrected, but I'm happy with the number. The other thing that I want to do, though, is I'm recommending that we had set aside $150,000 in the overlay to handle abatements and other things that get charged, exemptions, the senior work-off program and things like that. Because there was such a major increase in values when they did the full measure list, we went to John Geigas' house, we saw his basement, we're going to charge him $90,000 for that basement, we increase his value, John's going to get his property tax bill, and he's, I'm making that up, if we did not get a basement. I'm using as an example.
It'd be nice.
It'd be nice, yeah. But people are going to see an increase in their value for that stuff that we picked up. I'm anticipating a higher impact of abatement requests of the Assessors based on that, so I want to increase the overlay by 50 grand to cover that. So, I want to take some of that new growth that we got and put it in the overlay. If we don't spend it, it'll be available for future Town Meeting appropriation, should that need arise, like snow and ice deficit and things like that, but I really think we need to do that. So, that's a recommendation I'm making. Yes, Joshua?
So, the number had been $150,000.
Yes, sir.
And in recent history, did we not... In, in recent history, did we not take some of that money to cover other things?
We, we, we have.
So what is the five-year average?
$130,000.
So in the event, if you kept it at $150,000 and more people came in for abatements for the reasons that you just said, couldn't you go to the reserve fund to get additional money for that?
Not on the, not on the overlay. You'd have to hit the overlay reserve, which has about $300,000 in it. We're getting, we're getting to a low level where the Department of Revenue may not certify our tax rate if there isn't enough money in there. They want to make sure you can cover abatement requests because that's the only way you can do it. Otherwise, you have a revenue deficit. So I really think we need to go up that 50, 50,000, but that's a decision that the, the board and the finance committee will have to make. Is there anything you want to add to that, Jonathan?
Yeah, it's, remember it's abatements and exemptions. So, and it's motor vehicle excise abatements also. So those are all the things that go into, they come out of the overlay. And there were a couple of years where we, we ran a little bit lean and we used to, we, I think, I believe, when Reena was here, we used to do about $200,000 a year.
Correct.
We had dropped it down to 100 one year and 150. So it, and then we had a case settled, the state settled a case with a major utility and that grabbed some cash out of the overlay. They settled with them. So we're kind of getting down to that. We used to carry about $600,000. We're down to under four. Just makes me a little bit nervous if we have a big, you know, taxpayer in town or a utility file for an abatement. We get down to a certain point and the, and the DOI won't certify our tax rate, so.
So I'm, I'm, I'm a little nervous and that's why I want to put the extra 50 in there. If we don't spend it, we don't spend it. But it's there, in the event we need it. So now with all that taken into consideration, there's an additional $62,000 of unexpendable tax capacity instead of 197, 995, which is what town meeting had. If everything goes according to Hoyle at the, at the fall town meeting, it'll be a surplus of $260,000 of unexpendable tax capacity and help offset the FY '21 budget.
That's because of so much new growth?
Correct. That's a major portion of it, Becky. Yes. And then you ask yourself, well, what's going to be the impact on the tax rate? We had estimated at the spring town meeting that the estimated tax rate for next year would be 1859.
Can you zoom back a little bit so that people can read that?
Sure. Absolutely. Yep. We had, we had estimated that the tax rate at the, at the spring town meeting would be 1859 if everything passed. With this additional $7 million in new growth, the offsets and everything else that would go on with the excluded debt and the like, there won't be a change in the tax rate. We still think the tax rate will be around the 1859. Now that is an estimate when we get the final new growth certified, the final town meeting votes and all that, the final values approved by the Department of Revenue. It could be more, it could be less, but we think 1859 is a pretty good number. Yes, Jonathan?
And also, the board of assessors had a meeting on Friday and we're, we're in the process of setting values for the town. And the previous year, we had, we had an increase. And we're seeing, I don't know if it's quite a similar increase as we had last year, but we're definitely seeing an increase, especially in.
Based on sales?
Yeah, based on sales, especially in condominiums. So if, if values go up, then the tax rate will come down a bit.
It may come down. We'd still raise the same amount of money, but the higher the value, the lower the tax rate. So, but 1859 is a pretty good idea of where we'll, we'll be. Thank you for that, Jonathan. Jonathan, hold on to that, you might need to hear. So then I wanted to spend some time, and this is information that I sent out this afternoon because this is stuff that the tri board wanted to look at and, and understand. And one of the things that they wanted to understand is how we generated estimated receipts for fiscal '19 and what the outcome was. So when we put the budget together for FY '19, and that would have been in December of 2017, we estimated 3.9 million. The actual FY '19 receipts in June of 2019 was $4,728,000. So we had $734,000 more in receipts than we budgeted. Now, this is the way we've always done it to be conservative, but you may ask yourself, well, wait a minute, why aren't you spending all that, that extra money? So a couple of reasons for that. A, we've always budgeted those conservatively. B, this is how we generate free cash and our free cash policy says we want to generate between 1% and 2% of free cash each year. This is how we do it. So when you look at where the surpluses were, there's a couple of troubling things that I wanted to discuss with the board as to why this was 734,000. Motor vehicle excise, if we, if we were to fully fund that in, in estimated, what we took in at 1793, that $243,000 would be great, but it would hurt our free cash. We have also seen a downturn in the actual motor vehicle excise. The board will remember, when I put the budget to you last January, I told you we're seeing a decrease in the number of new car sales. In fiscal year '18, we took in $1.81 million in motor vehicle excise. We only took in 1793 in fiscal '19. Now, that could be a one-year anomaly, but it's the first time in five years that it's been less than the previous year. So I'm concerned about that. The occupancy tax, when we put our estimates together for fiscal '20, we carried 200,000 on that number. We went $48,000 more last year. We, we think that's a good number, but the reason we went to 200,000 is we know that we have the 3% coming in from the Groton Inn. So we, we estimated that at $50,000. So that's a good number. We think we're going to take that in for next year. We're going to estimate 200,000 for that. Penalties, interest and taxes, pretty similar to where we've been. Payment in lieu of taxes, that $21,000, 20 of that is from the Groton School, help offset the new school resource officer. We pretty much hit other charges where we, we estimated. That's the payment from Dunstable. Fees, $392,000. That's, Tommy had a really good year at the transfer station and recyclables. It could be a one-year hit because the year before, we didn't make the budget. This year, we exceeded it. So it depends on what the recycling market is. Rentals, because of success that we had at the country club, that was some of the money that, that generated the increase there. Building permits.
Wait, I'm sorry. That was a question I had. Rentals, it's all the country?
No, it's also the cell towers. We have, what, three cell towers?
Most, most of the surplus is the cell towers, I believe, but several thousand dollars.
Yep. Building permits, licenses and permits. Some of that, 75,000 of that number is because of the HBAC permit from Indian Hill. I'm getting nervous that we're trending down on building permits because not as many new homes are being constructed, a lot of commercial real estate isn't happening. So I'm really nervous about even making 300,000 on that number in fiscal year '20. The reason it's at, the reason it's at 113, 75, or three quarters of that came from that one permit, which I don't think is going to happen next year. So I'm a little nervous about that. Investment income, you look at that and say, you budgeted 20, you took in 94, what were you doing? And I ask myself that very question. So I'm going to stop talking and say, Michael, explain why that number's so high. Because again, this is a one-year anomaly.
We had three issues occur in fiscal '19 that caused the $75,000 variance. The first issue in early fiscal '19, the interest rate environment for our major two depositories, Main Street Bank and Lowell Five changed and, and I solicited and, and got a better rate on our deposits. We went from 1% to 2%. And that caused about a $10,000 increase in the general fund interest in fiscal '19. I have since budgeted for that additional 10,000 in FY '20.
We budgeted 40 in FY '20.
The other issue that occurred in fiscal '19 was that we had capital projects ongoing that we had borrowed for, through, through bond anticipation notes. In those projects, when they get borrowed, the, the, the outlays, the construction payments don't necessarily occur immediately. So we had quite a bit of money on deposit during fiscal '19 that was earning interest in the general fund that otherwise would not, not have. That same, that same issue has, has leaped over into fiscal '20 and we have all, we have also added another $10,000 in the budget for fiscal '20 for the money that we have, that we have, that we have to keep. We can't spend it because it has to wait for the, for the capital projects to, to cost themselves out. So that was $20,000. The third item was a $40,000 one-time general fund interest income occurrence that was a result of, in fiscal '19, we received notification from Morgan Stanley, which was one of our trust fund portfolio managers who had $6 million with us. We had $6 million with them, which included a few hundred thousand dollars in general fund money. I need to keep general fund money in this main body of trust fund investments because we, we transfer money in and out between the trust funds and, and the general fund as needed. That general fund money is also invested the same way that all the trust funds are invested. So we were told during fiscal '19 by this investment portfolio that unless we increased our relationship balance with them from the current $6 million to at least $10 million, we would, we were, we were then told we would have to go elsewhere because they were restricting themselves to customers of just $10 million or higher. So as a result of that, we went to a new firm in Worcester called Bartholomew. We, they, they came in with several other firms and they interfered with the trust fund commissioner and myself. So we went with the new firm and as a result of the conversion, they rebalanced the entire portfolio and took in one-time realized gains that had built up over the past five years. As a result of that, the general fund money that was in the trust fund balance, was part of the trust fund balance, received a $39,000 one-time infusion of a realized gain. That won't occur again in the future. So that represented about $62,000 to $65,000 of this, of this variance that you see.
Thank you, Mike. Recreation revenues, that's the country club. We all talked about that a few weeks ago. That was great news. And then the final one is $87,000 miscellaneous non-recurring. That's FEMA payback for a storm event that happened in March of 2018 and they reimbursed us in June of 2019. That's not going to happen in fiscal year '20. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited that we had this, but I'm a little nervous going into '20 on what our numbers are going to be. So we're going to continue to be conservative in our estimates and while this helps us in certify our free cash and things like that, there are troubling signs with regards to revenues coming to the town, which, sorry.
I guess maybe some of this will come out later as we go through the budgeting process, but looking at these figures, we have had feedback in the past about where we must be budgeting to be able to have all that much free cash.
Where most of the free cash has come from in, in previous years has been in the motor vehicle excise taxes. Then we had some really good building permit years. But the Department of Revenue likes us to base our estimated receipts. They want us to do it conservatively. They want to see us generating at least 1% to 2% of free cash. That's with our free cash policy that the board adopted, says. And this is how we, we budget. Go ahead.
35.
35%. So I'm going to recommend we continue down this path. I'll get to something in a minute that shows where there's some, some trouble, but $734,000 of, of the surplus, when you think about it, 87 of it is a one-time hit that we're not going to see again. Another 40 of it is a one-time hit that we're not going to see again. 113,000 of it is 75,000 of a one-time hit we're not going to see again. The meals tax, we're already bumping that up to 200,000 in fiscal '20. So we're already accounting for that increase in, in the numbers. So that's going to show up next year in what we, in what we budget. And then motor vehicle excise tax, that is shrinking because we took in less money this year than we took in in '18. So I understand your point, Becky, but I'm really getting a little bit nervous on future trends and I want to continue to be conservative in our estimates.
Right. I mean, certainly the large amount of surplus is very, very good news. We need to do the best we can.
I agree.
Mark, can you take this page at some point and can you just annotate maybe in another column to the right which, what amounts roughly you think are one-time that aren't?
Sure.
Just so that, I know you just gave it to us all verbally, but.
Please, but go ahead.
It might help as well when you do that, when you think about the trend here because the 21 number you have, which I don't know if you're going to show it, you probably are.
I'm going to get to that.
Well, that's a, that needs to probably appear too because it's not, by using that larger number, that 700 is not going to happen.
Correct.
Unless magic happens some other place.
Correct. I'll get to that.
Yeah, because Becky's point is correct, but you're, you're actually taking it down from this big number potentially in 2021.
Correct. Another thing that, that the, the tri board wanted to see is, okay, on the town budget, all unspent appropriations, what happened and where did that money go? So all unspent appropriations, that's both operating and capital totaled $1,404,555. Of that, $482,000 is encumbered into fiscal year '20. It's to pay for special projects, capital expenses that are out there, bills that came in in late June that we didn't get, bills that were, for money that was spent in June and the bills didn't come in until July, things like that. That totaled $482,000. So that left $557,000 of unspent appropriations. So now you wonder, where did the turnbacks come from? Well, $83,000 is the reserve fund. We budgeted 150. We only spent 70 of it.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could you explain the word turnbacks?
It's, it's things that we're not going to spend and it gets closed out to free cash. It gets turned back to the general fund. It's money that was raised and it's unexpended and we didn't spend it.
So it's where this $1,400 came from?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And then 482 is going to be carried over to fiscal '20.
Yep.
That leaves 557. Of that 557, I wanted to go over some of the significant ones over 20,000.
I got it.
The reserve fund is 83 of it. The town manager expenses prior year, we had gone to the finance committee for reserve fund transfer for Prescott in fiscal '18. We never spent the money in '19 because we didn't need to, and so that money got closed out. 64,000 in police wages, that's good news. Overtime went down. So kudos to Mike Luth in the, in the police department for controlling overtime. Dispatch wages, that is money that we had for the grant. We've had that discussion before. Senior sent the van, $21,000. That is, is a combination of usage, combination of the fact that our poor senior center has been in three different locations during the construction. We reduced that budget by 10,000 in fiscal '20. So we won't see that much of a turnback next year because we reduced it based on the experience. Library wages, there's a whole litany of reasons why that got turned back that we don't anticipate next year. And then the library decided not to do the exterior lights project in the parking lot. They, they did something to address it and they didn't need to spend this money. And then you have $174,000 of miscellaneous town manager turnback, 1,000 here, treasurer 1,000 there, and so on and so forth, adding up to the 174,000. So there's not a lot of reasons as to why we did it because of budgetary reasons. Things just happen through the year. When you think about it, 83,000 of the, of the turnback as a reserve fund. So that's a pretty, that's good news that we didn't have any emergency, a lot of emergencies last year.
The dispatch wages, you said that's a grant?
Yeah, we, we apply every year for a grant from the E-911, the state 911 fund. We take in about $240,000. Some of it is for salaries and wages, some of it is for equipment. Wages offset was 144,000 in that grant.
But so, again.
The previous year was about what, 70 or 80,000?
It was lower.
It was lower the year before.
It's, so it's a recurring thing. It happens every year, right?
But we budget fully for it, just in case we don't get it.
Budget for, we apply for a grant, we always get the grant.
Well, it's a grant program that could be stopped.
Yep.
At, at any point that someone on high decides we're not going to give those grants anymore. So it's a little less certain than.
Right.
Tax revenue coming in.
And plus Becky, the year before, wages was only 70, I think 78,000. That number's in my head. And obviously this year was a little bit more. So it depends, it fluctuates year to year. It depends on what equipment they need, what salaries and things like that. So that's why we fully fund dispatch wages. So then what we did, and this is.
Before we go back.
Please, please, Allison.
Can you also kind of flesh out to the right what the encumbered amounts, you know, projects are?
The 440, the 42?
Yep. And then at some point, I think it would be good to see what the miscellaneous unspend are. I know they're all smaller, but if we can.
Yep.
And then in terms of grants, just to throw out there, that's one of the things that the tri. the tri board will potentially be returning to discuss a little bit because the schools in the town handle them differently in terms of budgeting and accounting, so we may come back and talk more.
So then we developed a summary sheet going back to fiscal year 15 on where, you know, what the budget looked like, how we spent our money, what the free cash was each year, 1 million here, 1.2, 1.2, 2.3 in 18 and 2.2 in 19. A lot of that has to do with some commercial building permits that we received from the end and things like that. There was a one-time $800,000 correction that happened in fiscal 18 that generated that number. And then we show you how we've spent that money. So I think this is good information so you can see and then what the remaining amount was each year in free cash. So even though this number was 2.3 million dollars in fiscal year 18, we started with the number 400,000 because we didn't spend all the money the previous year. So the free cash generation was actually 1.9 million that year. And then we turned back 177, or 381,000 that led to the 2.3 million or the 2.2 million the following year. This year, we spent all but $194,000 in free cash on these various projects, but it gives you an idea of how we spent and we're estimating free cash for fiscal year 20 that Patricia's working on right now. It's not official, but it'll be in the 1.4 million neighborhood. So it's back to where we were previously. It's not those two high years of 18 and 19, but we'll get that free cash certified before town meeting. So we wanted you to see this information. And then this is a chart that Bud was talking about before. If we, Becky, back to your question that you asked, there was 784,000, why don't we spend more of it? So if we do spend 512,000 and we increase those estimated receipts by that amount of money, A, that's going to kill our free cash, which will hurt some of our capital projects and I think it'll affect our bond rating because we're not following our financial policy. But we think, where are we going to be with an override need in fiscal 21? We're still debating that. We're still formulating a budget. We think it's going to be anywhere between 500 and 1.1 million. Right now, today, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done and we'll continue to work on that over the next couple of months. But I'm a little nervous with some of the downward trends and some of the one-time impacts that we've seen in our estimated receipts are not going to be there in future years. So this sheet here shows you what the original estimate was when I put the five-year plan together and then working with the tri board to figure out what we can do with some of our estimated receipts. It still makes it, you know, over a five-year period, 2.2 million versus 1.8. It's really not that significant of a change over the course of five years because if you look up here, if you do 1.1 million this year and 572 this year, the override, anticipated override the following year is less, but more here because you have a smaller base you're starting from and you still have the same anticipated expenses. Again, this is all very preliminary. The tri board is working these numbers. They're meeting again on September 23 to go over, we're going to have better numbers on free cash. We're going to have the final new growth numbers to finalize the budget. We'll work some of the numbers so that when the finance committee and the select board get together the following week on September 30, because you have to meet around October 1st to give me guidance for the fiscal year 21 process, we'll have more information for you to look at. So there's a, I know there's a lot of stuff that I covered just now. There's a lot of information. If any of you have questions, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and talk to you about it. There's just a lot going on right now. Yes, Josh?
I just have two, two things. One, I had the understanding that the tri board was the town of Dunstable, the town of Groton and the school district. That's where the tri came from. But from what I've heard tonight, it sounds like this is only a duet. The town of Groton and the school community.
Well, three boards of the town, three boards, the finance committee, select board, school committee.
Well, but what was the original tri?
There had previously, originally, when it was, I think, kind of set up at the, when the school committee was more the driving force, the tri board was the two communities and the district.
Right.
That, I don't know, kind of met for a year or so and sort of fell by the wayside.
Dunstable didn't want to meet anymore.
Right. And now this is, this is kind of a new and different tri board. So you're right, we probably should be calling it a troika or something instead of, but it...
So my second question is, we're providing all this information to the school district. Is the school district providing to the town of Groton the equivalent information to this from their operation?
Not yet.
When does that come?
They just switched over business managers and I'm sure the new school business manager's going to be putting all that information together.
But this includes, Mark, you have kind of their updated needs for fiscal 20 are...
Correct.
Embedded in here.
I have their anticipating budgets.
Wishes.
Their anticipated budgets.
That's a whole other discussion.
Right. But are they telling us how they spent their money in 2019 and to the degree we're doing it here?
I haven't seen it.
Are we entitled to ask for it?
I would.
It would seem so.
I would think so.
So I think we should.
I'm very transparent in what I do.
Well, it doesn't get to be a duo or a try unless everybody's doing their part. That's where I'm coming from.
I answered to this board and the finance committee and I'm giving the information I was asked.
All right, so I'll leave it with you.
We will reach out and see what we can get.
So unless...
I would just say again, a reduced, I mean, the estimate of how much will be needed for an override next year is down a lot and that's good, although you just said that's really, that's a kind of floating number.
Correct.
I think so. I think to Mark, at some point, moving forward, if kind of you or we as a community can pick sort of a standard format for things so that, you know, on one form, we've got revenue listed this ways and then, you know, if we can just kind of standardize that so we're always looking at the same things, that would be helpful.
Yep. I'm just trying to get as much information as possible to everybody and this is a work in progress and I'll continue to work with the FinCom and the select board to give you what you want.
Yes, Josh?
I very much agree with John in terms of his statement for getting a very similar document and spreadsheets from the school in terms of what their spending was for the previous year. Without looking at that, from what their budget was that was approved, I want to see A, how they're tracking, B, what the trends are that are off and what the positives are. Because you can't put together a argument for an override without understanding what the municipal and what the school needs are jointly. So if you could formalize that and get that document, because what you've put together for us is very useful and what you've put together for them is very useful, but it's not the complete picture that I think we all need to see.
Okay. Excellent. So we're getting right from the frying pan into the fire for fiscal 21. I'll continue to update the board as we go. I wanted, I thought this morning's meeting, Bud and Allison and the team, the finance team, I thought it was a good discussion. We covered a lot of information and I think the lines of communication are wide open. So I don't think there's a problem getting Josh and John what they're talking about tonight. I see that happening. So the next thing on my town manager report is the fiscal year 19 fourth quarter update. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going over this right now because I just did. I showed you the numbers on receipts. I showed you the numbers on expenses. This is the form that Patricia does every quarter for you. You already have it. I've already talked about what the numbers are. So I'd be more than happy to answer any additional questions you have, but I think you see that fiscal 19 was a good year for the town in terms of receipts, expenditures. Our overall financial health is strong and I hope we can continue that in fiscal 20. Is there anything that you want to add to that? Bud, are there any questions that you have?
No, just for people who have been on the board a long time, this, we always generate cash for this, the reason we look here. If you look at 19, I think important, there's two numbers up there. One is the achievement to budget for revenue, which is 101%, I think it is.
Yep.
Rounded. And then the expense line below there is 96%. If you go back five years, those numbers other than 18 was an abnormality because of the Indian Hill and the tax pulling. It was 101, then it was 104 18, then 17 101, 16 101, 15 102 and 14 102. So we always consistently generate 1% to 2% more revenue. Expenses were 96%. If you go back, 18 was 97, 17 was 97, 16 was 95, 15 was 97, 14 was 97.
Very consistent.
There is a very consistent pattern there, which is what we just talked about as far as cash generation. We just, and we'll discuss this more in the tri, whatever we're going to call it, to see what, how much we can potentially maybe change that a little bit, but we still need the free cash for the big things like capital.
We've been, Bud, that's interesting that we've been very consistent in the way we do our business.
Bud has been consistent.
I think there's a couple of reasons for that. We have a finance team that's been in place for a number of years. We know what we're doing. We have good support from the FinCom and the select board and ultimately the taxpayers in town meeting. So I'm glad you talked about that. I think that's great. Any other questions on this? Okay, when we do the fourth, when we do the financial update, we also do a calendar year update. And when I was putting this together for the board, I got very excited because we made very achievable goals this year and we worked hard on them and I think we're showing a lot of great progress. So I want to take a couple of minutes with the board's indulgence, if I may, Allison, updating on where we are. So with terms of select, thank you finance team, I appreciate you being here tonight. With regards to the calendar goals, goal number one was select board functioning. We wanted to work on putting agendas out and things like that. We did that over the summer. We've done some meetings with some of our boards. Allison and I will get together and we'll put together the next several agendas now that we've reached the end of August. We're going to be going into a more weekly, after next week, into a more weekly meeting schedule. So we'll work on getting that out. So I would say this goal is ongoing and it's, and we're doing what we said we were going to do. We've had a couple of updates from some committees. And I know one of the things we were talking about was how we're going to appoint committee members, which we need to talk about when we get into the goal number two. But I know Becky has been working on that and I think you were planning on giving an update tonight on that, Becky? So we get to that later on in the meeting when we do our ongoing issues update, we'll talk about that. But I'd say this goal is well on its way to being met. Goal number two is the major initiative committee. Josh and I put together a proposed charge for the committee. The board adopted that, subject to amendments offered by the FinCom, who are meeting next Tuesday night, September 4 to review the charge. They will give us back their feedback. In the meantime, we advertised for this committee and as of 4 o'clock today or 5 o'clock today, we received 11. We received one more, Becky, after I talked to you. There are 11 people who expressed an interest. I asked Dawn today to email all 11 applicants and let them know that this will probably be on the agenda either September 16th or 23rd for interviews. I want to wait until the FinCom reviews the charge, gives you feedback, allows you to debate it, send it out to them again and then do your interviews after that. So it'll probably be around the, we'll probably talk about the charge on the 9th after the FinCom meets on the 20, on the 4th. You guys can look over the FinCom's comments, put it on the agenda for adoption on the 20, on the 16th and then maybe do the interviews on the 23rd or something like that. Does that make sense? Okay.
What size had we decided?
Five.
Or haven't we decided?
So you have 11 applicants and that's why Becky's appointing thing, the way we do it now is you vote and then, which works, but if you want to tweak that, fine. If not, that's what we'll probably move forward with. But I would say this goal is well on its way to being completed. With regards to the green communities, we did receive the grant. I believe I sent you out a copy of that last week. So we are well on our way for filing our grant application on, in October. So I'm very happy about that. The MRPC will be helping us.
And it's only, they've only just begun on that, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
If, you know, if there are any issues that come up in the department heads as we go through that, you'll keep us informed.
Absolutely will. This is important. This is an important goal. We want to get done in the fall.
Mark, does MRPC have a set kind of process or protocol to help us determine when we want to set those start and end dates for the first three-year?
Yeah, that's part of what she's working on with us. So yes, we will have, we will have that ongoing, yes. I'm just making myself a note. If you'll indulge me for a minute. With regards to determining the level, affordable levels of public safety, last meeting, you had the police chief and the fire chief in here. They've given you, I don't want to rehash what they did. They gave a very two-hour presentation last week, last meeting. But I, just to summarize, the police chief feels he needs another year to evaluate the police department at full staffing. He suggested that there is something about needing two additional dispatches. That could be something that the major initiatives committee takes on, one of their first tasks to look at once you get them up and running, or the finance committee. The fire chief, you know, wants to continue recruiting call firefighters. I put in here, there are 10 applicants that have come through on the last charge. He's hoping to get six of them as call firefighters. So that's good news. So there is interest. All of this discussion in public has been very positive, getting people to come forward. And also with regards to emergency management function, you ratified my appointment of Steele as the EM director. He's working over the next several months formulating an operational plan. So I'd say this goal is well on its way of being completed. Review all select board policies. Town council, who is here tonight, gave us all of his comments. The next step in the process is for Allison and I, we're meeting Friday morning at 8 o'clock, to start going through the policies to bring them back to the select board. So town council did his job. Now it's up to Allison and I to do our job to bring back final proposed policies to the board. So this goal is well on its way of being completed.
And I think I had mentioned before, but it seems to me that when we get to the point of reviewing everything that you're going to recommend, we should do that at a workshop session.
Yeah.
I agree with you 100% because that's going to be a lot of work, Becky.
Yeah.
With regards to this one, the operating budget of the school in town district, we just spent the first part of this meeting reviewing that discussion. So that, you know, there's full communication between the schools and the town, so we're moving forward on that particular goal. So I'm very happy that we've met that. Oh, yes, please.
I guess I would point, I just want to point out and I'm reiterating something I said earlier. It doesn't sound as though the communication is equally strong in both directions.
Understood. We'll work on that. We'd like the direction of the town side of communication a little bit.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
We put all the cards on the table. I think that's what everybody needs to do.
With regards to goal number seven, I'll defer, you know, Becky has been appointed to the housing trust to replace Josh. I'm not sure where we are with this, Becky. I don't know if you have an update.
It's, you know, it's sort of embarrassing. It looks like we haven't done anything. I think, I've said this before, it is frustrating to me that there aren't, so far I have not discovered, good options for what the select board can actually do toward getting more lower-cost housing in this town. I would say there are some things that have happened, but they have happened by other groups. The housing production plan had a big meeting in, I think, June, end of June and got, and they're well at work on gathering data and writing the report that is required. That's, that's being overseen by planning board, I think. And the house, and now that I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust, that group is meeting later this week to also continue discussion of that. I understand that market forces generally control what gets built on land, that developers build what will make money for them and I can't fault them for that. However, just if anybody is listening, I think there is a demand for smaller housing for over 55 population, the over 55 population in this town not necessarily subsidized. And so I continue to hope that some way, we will find some way to construct some of that housing.
Josh?
Kind of following up on what Becky said, I think that the reason that very little's happened from the Affordable Housing Trust perspective is that an extremely disingenuous developer who, in my opinion, built the town, the homeowners over Boynton Meadows, has handicapped the ability of the trust to get a... the ability of the trust to get additional funds from Town Meeting to explore some of the alternatives that Becky was talking about. Additionally, I think that the town has a certain amount of responsibility to force the developer of Boynton Meadows, Meadows, to follow through with his obligations to finish that project. I saw in our correspondence recently, a letter from one of the members over at the condominiums over there, that the project's sitting in the lurch, and that we need to be able to do something to leverage the position of the homeowners to see that this project's completed. And in so much as there's no bond being held by the town or the Planning Board or anybody, I'm not exactly sure, but we did have an appeal from those homeowners, Mark.
Yep. They're working with the Planning Board, Joshua.
I understand that. But again, there's no bond, there's no anything. So I would like to see what actions we could take as a Select Board to encumber some kind of funds, place a lien, do something on this to force their hand to get this job done, because these folks who are living there are taxpayers, living in an incomplete project. And it's really tough to be able to move forward with another project, whether it be the Affordable Housing Trust or another entity, when the one that we engaged in has worked out so poorly. So, is my two cents worth on that?
So we'll continue to work, work on this. The final goal, we've completed it, subject to Town Meeting approval, and that's the data management IT. The committee department has presented their findings to the board in July. They recommended to stay with the current software package and look at purchasing additional capabilities. You saw in my anticipated fall Town Meeting budget, the money to do that. So I would say, I am very pleased, thanks to the support of the board, the department heads, Dawn, and the work that we've been doing, Town Council, that we are really close to achieving all of our goals this year. Kudos to everybody to get that done. So that's, I was very excited to get this update today. Very excited to get this update today. Unless there are any other questions, let's move to the next bit of information. I see Bruce and Mary and Bud are here, and Josh is here, and I'm here. And that is an update on Prescott. So you will, yes, John?
Before we go very far, I do not understand what the headings of these columns are meant to be.
Okay.
It's just, I don't know what they're trying to show here. So maybe we could start by explaining what, what these columns and the labels that they have are intended to identify.
Mary and Bruce, you wanna come up to the table? Bud, if you wanna come up to the table?
Maybe I'm the only one.
No, no. I think too, to jump on that, that this, like some of the other things, it would be great if there were sort of a standard thing that we're seeing every few months.
This was our first, this was our first go-around, and they follow on their income and expense line what they submitted when they submitted their RFP. So they follow, please, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, they follow the same format as what they did with the RFP. So we pretty much looked at the same categories going down, but I'll let Mary and Bruce take us through their budget. Bud's here, Josh is here. We went through this in great detail and great length when we met with Bruce and Mary a couple of weeks ago before Josh left on his job.
So is one of these columns that information from the RFP?
Yes. Column one is the, is the original.
Correct.
Budget. They put a three-year plan together, remember that? Column one is that, that first column that says.
Okay.
Column two with.
Column one, is there any meaningful difference between proposed year-one budget, September eighteenth to August nineteenth, and the year-one budget, September eighteenth to August nineteenth?
I read the titles twice there.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
They're different titles.
Which one are you looking at, Josh?
One calls it about a proposed budget, the other says a one-year budget. The dates are identical. There's only one set of numbers.
Well, the first column is the budget that they put together for year one, okay? That was the budget they put together originally. Column two is actual. Is actual. Year one. It's a, it's a projected where they think they're gonna end up against that budget year. That's column one. Column two and column three. One is where they are through July, and they said that now they have a, where they're currently sitting, and then they say, here's what we think the projected final's gonna be. So if you look at that column, it says they, they're, that's where they believe the numbers are gonna end up for that year.
So is it the case that the names of the columns have simply been duplicated? There's no significant meaning to the difference in the wording or anything else to the doubleheading?
The first four rows have been repeated in the printout.
Okay.
Sorry.
I can understand, I understand that. Now, thank you. Go ahead.
It's like they've been repeated.
Go ahead, Bud.
Yeah, we had the meeting in July, so you can see in that middle section, July two thousand nineteen, was what we actually had. And then we projected what we would end with.
Over the remaining two months, July and August.
Right, right, because our fiscal year ends August thirtieth. But we are obliged by our lease to meet in July. So that's why we're showing you what we think is pretty good news, and we're ending on a pretty high note here with our projected versus our actual.
So does it, on the gross profit line, is that, is that the ending? Is that what you're talking about?
No. That's the revenue line. They call it gross profit, it's revenue.
Okay.
There's terminology that was used that's different than we're used to. That's a, that is a revenue line.
Okay. But to follow.
Expenses are below that.
Just to use the gross profit line as an example, the first number is what was projected for the first year.
The ninety-one, yes.
The ninety-one, eight eighty. The eighty-two, five eighty is what is anticipated at this point for the ending of the first year.
Well, we discussed this at the meeting and it wasn't corrected here.
I brought, yeah, it wasn't. I brought, I brought the printout.
This is all I had after the meeting.
Yeah. The eighty-two number should have eight four two oh added in. So we got the corrected numbers there.
This is where we're ending up. So I will let someone see and also judge you, because you might be asking about year two and year three, we can get in there too, if you'd like to look at it.
Realistically, when, when do things get closed out?
Allison, did you just give my away?
The actual end of our fiscal year is August thirty, thirty-first, so they'll be.
So just in terms of the workload, I mean, is it, will we have something, you think, in September, or are we looking into October? Final numbers, is that?
We have very little to worry about closing out, because our utilities are pretty well paid for and projected. We know here what are in, what we're gonna be paying our employees, and we aren't running any programs during the summer. So closing this out, I think you'll agree, Bruce, is pretty easy. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll close it out pretty quickly. But I think from what you see here, from what we planned to what we ended up with, and if you're looking at the sheets, you'll see some, some of the major differences were in our class tuitions. We projected that we would make thirty-three thousand five hundred in tuitions. We actually made forty thousand.
Mary, can you help us understand where, where that is? Where's that line?
This is under income. Well, the screen is.
The screen's wrong, huh?
The screen is a little bit cut down.
Well, the only thing that's different on the screen is, they're all correct, but it doesn't add right.
Those numbers and these numbers are identical.
Here's where we projected thirty-three thousand five hundred. We ended up with forty thousand in income, which leads us to believe that the programs that we were providing, fall, winter, and spring, were, well, we know they were well-attended, and we had about seven hundred registrations over those three semesters. So we made more money out of programs than we anticipated. We have, the other big part of our budget comes from long-term space rental. We, of course, didn't get our lease with you until the end of August, so we were a little bit behind the evolve in getting our rentals in. But even without these not being full-year rentals, we hit the mark of twelve thousand thirty-two. And we project next year twenty-three thousand. We have secured four leases for next year, as long as I'm pointing this out. We have four major leases signed for next year, and already we hit that twenty-three thousand dollar number for next year, which is, we have twenty-six thousand dollars in leases tied up for next year. And room for more.
What does the one, so on our sheet, there's a one in parentheses?
Yes, that referred back to the report we gave you and our business plan to show where we thought the rentals were coming from. You recall, it was with a certain percentage of the, it refers to the original report we gave and our business plan. So we tried to give you what we, what we had in our, to you and where we ended up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The only thing, the only thing that's wrong is the eighty-four twenty is not added into the eighty-two. All the numbers are correct, it just didn't add downright by eighty-four twenty left out.
Eighty-four twenty wasn't adding in?
Add that in, that's the ninety-one thousand dollar number that's on your sheet. It just wasn't added right. All the other numbers are correct.
The reason that was added last is because this is accrued assets. We came into this year having had a pilot year the year before from, with the school district, and we, along with donations of our founding members, had accrued assets of fifty-eight thousand dollars. And we had projected we were going to take twelve thousand seven hundred thirty dollars of our accrued assets and put them in to, to Prescott this year.
To break even.
To break even. When all is said and done, we're projecting that we're only gonna need to put about eight thousand of our accrued assets.
So the good news, the good news about year one is that they were actually favorable, if you take away that donation line. Take that, that donation, that funding, twelve, the one that.
They actually had to use less.
They used, they, they were favored by four thousand dollars on an operating basis. So they had more revenue and they spent less. So therefore, they were favorable to what they said they were gonna do. And that's, like Mary said, that's indicative by the twelve, seven, thirty only being eight four two oh. They had to take less from their cash fund.
So they balanced out their revenues. They took in what they said they were gonna take in, and they spent.
They actually took, they actually took in more on an operating basis. They took in more rev, real revenue. And they spent less real cash out the door. So they actually were favorable from what they said they were gonna do in year one by four thousand dollars, and that's very good.
Because they didn't have to spend the twelve in the last year.
Yes, that's right.
So when we met with the, with the friends to go over the financial projections, from, from our perspective, they did exactly what they said they were gonna do in the first year. And we were comfortable with the numbers that they presented to us for year two. My concern in talking that day was, did they have those long-term rentals secured? And that's that twenty-three thousand dollars, if you look, I have a little dash next to it. That was my concern going in, but now Mary has come in here tonight and said they have those rents secured to thirty-two thousand.
We have twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand.
We have twenty-six thousand secured, and we have, we've hired Exit Realty to be our representative, and we have rooms on the main floor that could bump that number up if those were rented partially or fully up to thirty-three thousand. So we think that the rentals, we're gonna hit our mark on rentals.
So that, that was my, and Josh and Bud will remember, that was my one concern, and Mary has alleviated that concern tonight by saying that they have those long-term.
And the other, the other important point to look on this chart, if you stay right at the top of your mind.
Sorry?
They were, in order to break even year one, they thought they were gonna have to spend twelve thousand. They didn't, they only spent eight thousand to break even.
Now they have nothing.
Now they have nothing. That says they're projecting, this year coming up right now, that they're gonna need no business contribution. So that funding member, founding member contributes. So they said the revenue now, real revenue, is gonna equal expenses. So they're gonna break even, that's the forecast, without taking any money from their fifty-eight thousand dollar cash fund.
So their emergency fund of fifty-eight thousand is not going to be touched, which is good news.
Right.
If everything goes according to, to plan.
Right.
Right now, they, you know, they, they spent, they made forty thousand dollars in class tuition. They actually cut that down to thirty-six next year, so they're being conservative in that number. They have long-term rentals in, in which they're providing, they have that, that covered, which is a major portion of their income. So the ninety-seven thousand dollar budget next year, without touching their fifty-eight thousand dollar reserve, is good news. So overall financially, the friends have done and accomplished what they said they were going to accomplish in the first year, and I see no reason why that won't continue in year two based on what we saw, Josh, Bud, and I saw when we met with them. Josh, I don't know if there's anything you wanna add to that, but that's where, that's where I see it right now.
No, I think the two of you, actually the four of you, what we have represented what went on in our meeting, and I certainly think that you demonstrated that you set a budget, and first-year budgets are awfully tough to, to follow, and you had a few pitfalls, but you also had a few gains that you didn't expect. So those offset, and I think you've made the adjustments for the proposed year-two budget appropriately based on what happened in year one. So, looks good to me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. I'm on the line here that says gross profit.
Yeah.
Really oughta say gross revenue.
That's what we said in the beginning.
That's what we said in the beginning.
Because when I look at this sheet.
That is revenue.
The income and the outcome are balanced, so the gross profit is zero.
Right.
And that's what they said it would be.
Well, I know, but when you look at this sheet, you could get yourself pretty far confused.
It should, they should be aligned at the, first of all, you're right, that should say revenue. Then, at the very bottom where it says total expenses, that's correct. And then it should have a net profit line, it should go zero, zero, zero. Or some positive number in the future. So they're missing, change that line and then add a net profit line at the very bottom, which is just simply a subtraction of those two numbers.
And if I might say that, because we now understand what a stable budget is, and we can project a little bit better for next year, this next year, we're looking to provide more free community activities. We were very hesitant to do that the first year because we weren't sure if we would hit our numbers. Now that we know we have, we are providing our space free to nonprofits. Any nonprofit organization that wants to have a meeting at Prescott can do so free of charge. And some have already started doing that. Good Depp just did some planning there a couple of weeks ago. We also have planning on some free activities, which will be announced in our Prescott catalog. We're having a film series. We'll be having a crafts fair the first Saturday of the month, and we're going to be having a nonprofit fair around Giving Tuesday or Thanksgiving. So we wanna make it a community center, which means not only that the community uses it for rentals, but that the community can use it for no charge, and that's what a non, that's what a nonprofit is.
Don't wanna give too much away.
No, no, we gotta balance, keep it at zero or profit. So I'm proud to present our catalog. This is gonna be coming out in all the mailboxes next week, so you're getting a Xerox preview copy. I'll pass this out to you.
So overall, I'd say the first year was successful. I wanna thank Bruce and Mary for working with us and opening the books for us as they are required to do under, under the lease, but I think things, things went well. If, if the board will indulge thirty more seconds on, on this subject, I wanna update you on where we are with the, thank you, Mary, with the sprinkler system. Bruce has taken over as the project manager. Last week, I went to see the Community Preservation Committee and asked them to put a placeholder article on the warrant for the Springtown meeting, which I've added with their permission. Bruce is in the process of procuring an engineering firm to do the specs. It is our hope that Bruce gets that done by middle to late September. We will go out to bid with a two-week turnaround, because we've already reached out to some of the sprinkler companies. They wanna see the, the design. We have an anticipated bid opening date of October sixteenth on the sprinkler system. Depending on what the numbers are, we will either have to go to Town Meeting for additional funding from CPC or not. I'm hoping not, we don't know. But that is in process, and if we can get that done, that will give me even more confidence in the projections from the friends, because now they'll have access to additional space within the building to rent, which is, would be good news.
It's critical for year three.
For year three. That's when they have to stop paying us at least twenty thousand dollars in income, rent, I guess you would call it, plus a certain percentage of their profits, which I hope are huge. Right? Is that the plan? So anyway, that's all in process and I think we're, we're moving in a, in a, in a positive direction.
And is it also true that if and when the sprinkler system is installed, it loosens some of the restrictions on what can happen in the building?
Well, if, if an alarm system along with a sprinkler system is installed, then we've been told by the state fire marshal and our fire chief that then, uh, once again, we can offer classes for children, uh, if, because then we might be able to revert to the educational code, building code. Because those, those are required. Now that we've been re-coded, we have to, uh, apply to the brand-new code. So that will provide us more opportunity because then our children will be back in our classes. This budget doesn't provide for that. And we'll have access to the second floor. I can say right now that a lot of the people who are inquiring about rentals are looking for office space. And they look at the second floor. We don't necessarily show it to them, but they go up there. And that's the kind of office space people want, small, private office space. The rooms that we have right now, seven hundred and fifty square feet or three hundred and fifty square feet seem a little large to the, some of the small businesses. So we're looking forward to getting to the second floor and redoing the lease with you.
So that's all I have, uh, on that. Thank you, Bruce, Mary and Bud and Josh. So that concludes, um, the Town Managers Report. We have some stuff under, uh, the business, which the board can take up. The first issue is something that Josh asked to be put on, um, tonight's agenda, uh, before he had, uh, left, he wasn't at the last meeting. Uh, the specific issue is whether or not to post the, um, Select Board Packet prior in advance of, of, of the meeting on Monday night. Um, Josh and I have had some spirited discussions, I would say, on the, on the subject matter. Um, so I'll let Josh give his piece and then I'll respond with my piece.
Well, I've been approached by a few members of the community who, when they saw certain issues were upcoming on agendas, they wanted additional background information. And at first, uh, we had talked about this as a board a number of months ago and decided that, you know, we should not publish the whole packet, uh, online. Um, and I was in agreement at the time because I get to see the packets every time they come out. So I really don't have any question on the background and backup information on things we're gonna discuss because overall, um, Don and, um, Mark do a very nice job putting together that information for our purposes. So when a couple of people spoke with me about upcoming issues, they didn't understand the rationale behind a few things and said, "Well, if you publish the packet, certainly that'll give a tremendous amount of background, not just to you, but to the public at large." Um, and I thought about that after the fact. And other than executive session, um, issues, um, I saw no reason why not to publish the whole packet. And during the, what Mark called spirited discussions that we had, um, he made a couple of good points that a lot of the information that are contained within the packets that go out to us are subject to change and that it's given at, um, at a, a point of time. And over the next two or three days, numbers can change, additional information can, can come in. And Mark's concern is if we published the, uh, information, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong here, and the numbers do change or circumstances change, that next thing that may occur is the public will be saying, "Well, that's not what you had in your packet and why are you discussing it like that?" So from that perspective, I've rethought this again. Um, and I think that if somebody wants additional information at this point, that they should reach out to a Select Board member to discuss it or reach out to the Town Manager or show up at one of our meetings.
Yeah, I.
Um, I've given it, Mark, I've, I've come around back to where we were.
Thank you, Josh. There were, I'm, I'm not gonna say anything. I, I'm, I'm taking the win. Uh, so is there any other debate on that?
Yes.
Okay. I thought that was too easy.
I have not come around to that. Um, I, I thought for a long time that we should be releasing the packet to the public and I frankly do not, I, I guess I'd like to hear from you, Mark. What is the argument other than, well, the information might change and so someone would...
Two, two specific examples.
Have the wrong expectation.
Yeah, two, that's, I'm, I'm glad you asked. Two specific examples have, have come up in just the last two meetings. I sent out the charge of the, and that was one of the issues that people were looking at, the Major Initiative Planning Committee. I sent it out on a Thursday. It was the draft. I received feedback from several members and I provided an updated charge on Monday. Now, if I had published that revised charge and it changed significantly from the Friday to the Monday, we added that whole thirty thousand dollar piece, which was a significant change in the, in, in the charge. I post that online. Bruce Easton goes online, reads it, says, "Oh, okay, that makes sense to me." And then all of a sudden it gets adopted and he doesn't go back and look to see if there was an update posted to the, to the agenda. And now all of a sudden we changed it by adding a significant change to it. Well, now all of a sudden Bruce is like, "Well, wait a minute. That's not what I saw. What's the problem?" Tonight, another example, I sent out budgetary information to you, but now I gave you supplemental information, uh, prior to the meeting tonight that allowed you to look at and have questions. That wasn't in the packet. I'm just not comfortable putting it up online because I don't know if Bruce or Mary or Bud or Judy or Connie is gonna look at it. And then I don't know if they looked at it. I don't know what they know. It would be more helpful for people to contact me if they see something on the agenda and say, "Hey, Mark, is there some backup information you can give me prior to the meeting?" That happens a lot right now. And I can tell, I see Anna sitting over there. Anna asks sometimes, she sees something on the packet. "Hey, can I see what's on the agenda tonight? Can you send me that information?" Absolutely. We, we want, we wanna be transparent. We wanna give out information. I'm just uncomfortable posting it when it's subject to change. That's my, that's my argu- that's the argument I made with Josh.
Okay, well, so, um, I don't think we're being transparent and I definitely think that we should be. Um, I actually had, someone had told me, I don't know, at some point in the past, that the town of Acton did publish their, uh, packet ahead of time. So I called to find out. And, uh, the person in the Selectman's Office there said, "Yes, they, they make it public as soon as it's distributed to the board members." They have a hyperlink to, they use some system called DocuShare. So, and I, I did go on the website and I could see that everything was there, every individual document that was gonna be discussed. So of course things can change between Thursday or Friday when we get it and Monday. But that can, there's a way around. I mean, we can, we can work with that because whatever is posted publicly can have the update also added to it. Um, I think people will be better informed. They'll come to a meeting and ask better questions or they will understand the discussion if they're watching at home, uh, if they have the opportunity to read that material ahead of time, those who care about a particular issue especially. Um, I have been in the position, I've been called about, can you tell me what's in the packet about X, Y, Z issue? Um, and I'm, you know, I'm happy to do that, but I'm not always available and sometimes, um, that's not the most effective way. And, and I can't, you know, because it's a one big PDF file, I can't even copy out that particular bit of information and email it to someone. Um, so telling someone over the phone about, you know, a page of figures is not very efficient. But there's another aspect of this that I think is really important. And that is that the information that comes to us in the packet and gets discussed at the meeting, it's up on the screen, it is not saved on the website. So there is no place that we or any member of the public can later go back to refer to it. And I think that is a, a tremendous failing for ourselves and for the public. I mean, I know I have tried to go back and find a document that we discussed six months ago and, you know, last time we talked about this issue. And it's not there. And, and I think it should be. I mean, I, I don't, I, I guess I think it's surprising to me that we haven't, um, had some complaints about this, cause these are public records and I think that they are supposed to be saved. We talk about them at the meeting. I think they should be made public ahead of time and I think they should be saved on the website. And I think that we're, um, we're failing the public by not doing that.
John?
Uh, I've got a couple of thoughts. Um, one concern I have is that, uh, when we start, if we were to start putting the whole package out there, you know, we'd really have to freeze that package at the point we put it up there. Because if things do change in the two or three succeeding days before the meeting, there's no way to get the word out to everybody that, "Oh, this particular document has had a change," unless they're subscribing and we change the agenda. And it concerns me that it may hinder us getting the best information available before we come to the meeting. Because we put this wall in there that says, "You have to deal with at the meeting what we closed out three days ago" because that's what you showed to the public. So that's, that's one concern that I have. Um, I have another concern is I'm always happy if someone calls me and, and wants, uh, to have a piece of whatever is in, um, the agenda package. Uh, because one, I can tell them that I'm gonna give it to you, but it may change. So don't go to, don't go to the bank with it, but co- come to the meeting. And I can go in there and cut out any page, any collection of pages and move it over into an email and send it on its way. So I'd much rather they call me personally than us locking it down three days before the meeting.
But it's a PDF. You can do that?
Beg your pardon?
It is, it comes as a PDF document. I guess I just don't have the technical skills to cut parts out.
I have several tools that will just cut it out, take an image and turn it on to a mail. So it is doable. And I think it's a better approach. I'd rather have a conversation with them and give it to them and say, you know, "This is what it looks like right now, but it could look a little different come the meeting." So if it's important to you, please come to the meeting. That's where I'm at.
So for me, I struggle a little bit because I don't think that the packet i- is intended to be a standalone document. I'm hesitant to kind of release it because I think people potentially will grab that information in advance of a meeting, think they're informed and then miss out on a discussion or a change of direction. Um, the other concern I have is that, you know, there, there are things, even as a Select Board member, there are times that I read something on the agenda and I have to call the Town Manager and beg him to tweak my memory and, and get things kind of up to speed. And that the, the packet isn't intended nor could it ever be kind of a, an entire history of an issue or something. That it's, it's, it's very hard to share information like this that is intended toward one audience, kind of those of us who are following along on a week-by-week basis, with another audience, which is folks who are potentially kind of popping in and out with varying levels of, of interest and information. I don't know, I don't, I don't think there's a good solution.
What about the, what about the matter that we are not saving this information?
Everything's saved.
So that I really don't understand because within your Google Drive, I don't delete anything that's in there. So you can go back to the first meeting you were at as an elected board member and you can access every single packet up until today. That's at your hands.
Can the, but the public cannot do that?
Correct.
But the public, I mean, the minutes are the record of the meeting.
Those are online.
And that's, I mean, that's part of.
County average reports are online.
Part of the, the, the intent of the minutes is to capture what actually went on at the meeting, not what was presented in advance as a potential direction for discussion.
So we're up to date. Don has done a phenomenal job keeping minutes up to date and they're posted as soon as the board approves them. She posts them the next morning.
So, um, I don't know how, uh, other towns that do publicize the packet deal with the fact that information changes. I do think that, um, that is a solvable problem for us and it isn't solved by saying we won't make any changes. Cause I agree, John, that that would be, um, you know, that, that would be a step backwards in good government. Um, but this, the system that I saw Acton using, the DocuShare, uh, I assume has a way of saying, "This is an updated version. It's been updated." That, and yes, that does, um, it does put some responsibility on someone and there will be times when someone will not have seen an update. But I think, you know, given the broader picture of the benefit of people wanting to know what we're talking about, um, we can put plenty of disclaimers on our website that say, "This, all this information is subject to change. Please call if you have questions." Um, and, you know, you can subscribe the way you can subscribe and get notified if, I get notified if there's been a change in an agenda for certain committees that I signed up to, to learn that about. If, if there's been a change in information that's been distributed, I think we can easily overcome that issue. I think the broader, the bigger thing to think about is why are we not sharing this information freely with the public?
We, may I?
Yeah, and then we're gonna go to Bruce.
Okay. We do a, I, I, you know, you said before you don't think we're transparent at all. I, I, I disagree with that emphatically. I, I think we do a really good job. If anybody wants information, we provide the information right away. My biggest concern on this whole packet, the one day that I forget to do an update or not go back and, and, and put something out and they come to a meeting and say, "Hey, wait a minute, that's not what we saw." The board looks at me and say, "Well, what are you doing?" We get busy. I don't wanna use that as an excuse, but there could be that one time that either Don or I forget to do something on an update and then everybody's looking at us, "Why didn't you do it?" And that's an added responsibility that I really don't wanna have the responsibility of. You know, we, 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 there's a lot that went on today before this meeting. A lot of information. I had meetings all day today. And, you know, if I didn't get a chance to go back and update something, um, then you're gonna look at me and say, "Why wasn't that done?" And I, I just don't want that added burden. Sorry. It's, it's an added burden to Don and I that I'm just not ready to take on.
Bruce?
Yeah, so I'm really sympathetic to the idea of disclose, disclose, disclose. That's sort of the nature of where I come from. Um, so I think there is a technological solution and, and there has been for some time. Uh, and maybe there's better ideas. But, uh, this RSS, Real Simple Syndication is something that's, that's been around for a long time. So if you click on something to download an article, uh, or a piece of information, you're automatically signed up for a push. In other words, whenever that document changes, whether you request it or not, you get a copy sent to you. And you can do that to either the entire packet or you can break it up into pieces as PDF documents so that if you only interested in one particular topic on the agenda and you click on that and get it and it changes, it comes right back to you. Uh, and also the PDF should have sort of a watermark on it in, in fairly bold, uh, indicating that this is a preliminary document and that you should check and sort of have that on every page. I would recommend that you talk to your IT department and see how difficult it would be to set this thing up. And if it's not too difficult, to try it for maybe a month or two and see if these potential difficult situations actually arise or not. And then sort of do a reassessment after a couple of months and see if you wanna continue it or not or whether it turns out to be more trouble than it's worth. But at least for the, for the public, uh, I, I think it's definitely a benefit. And, and you, you can evaluate whether it's a, a benefit for you or not, given, given the additional work of making sure these things get published in a timely manner and the IT department knows what to do with it.
Let me ask you a question. So they would have to subscribe beforehand?
But basically when you download the document for the first time, you have to put in your, your email address. And then whenever that document changes, um, basically the system sends you a new copy of the document, whether you requested it or not.
So what about people that can't subscribe, wouldn't subscribe? They'd be left out and we wouldn't be disclosing anything to them if they're not asking for it?
Yeah, there's always the guy that's living in the cave, right? And, um.
There's, there's a lot of them.
It's, uh, it's something that, that's difficult to deal with. Um, and, um.
Or, or maybe someone that's not internet savvy, like a C. Or, or maybe someone that's not internet savvy, like a C or, uh...
Yeah, basically...
If they can't subscribe, they're not gonna get it either.
Yeah, basically...
And if we're gonna do it, we better do it for everyone, right? If we're gonna be fully transparent, fully, we need to...
So if you were able to come into the town hall, then basically we, we could create a, an account for that person. Just, just in the way of, of getting the document the first time, you can get it the second and third time. You might not get notified that it's been changed, but that's sort of the cost of doing business if you're not sort of up to date with what's going on.
I think... Josh?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna take the benefit of, of having our town council sitting on the other side of the room on this. And I believe you've answered this before, Paul, but, uh, we have no legal obligation to release the packet, is that correct? What, in advance of the meeting?
Yeah, I was gonna say, ultimately, these are public records.
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause if you used it at a meeting, you have to produce it. But you do have ten days to produce it. So if someone gives you a public records request on a Friday, you don't necessarily have to give an answer on a Monday. So the answer is ultimately you have to produce what you used at a meeting, what was given to you post packet communications, not the stuff in executive session.
And, and very...
And that doesn't require you to post a packet or not post a packet.
So, one more question. Um, you also serve as a selectman in another community, is that correct?
Indeed, eight terms.
Do you release your packets in your community in advance of the meeting?
We take the position it's not an all or nothing. In other words, you're, you're debating here, do you release the packet, do you not release the packet? There's a lot of stuff, you know, a letter from Verizon, a, a statement from DEP that they're going to be doing X, Y, and Z, or mosquito spraying. There's a lot of communications, but why would you hold back and not give it to the public? On the other hand, this, this stuff that the town administrator is working on, we consider, and there's an exemption under the public records law for policies that are in the process of being developed. So some of the town administrator's stuff, we don't put into the packet because he's working on it. So in that town, we don't say everything gets released and we don't say that nothing gets released. We release eighty percent.
Could I follow up with another question for Paul? Uh, between you and your fellow, um, members of your firm, uh, you deal with several, with a number of other towns in Massachusetts, can you just give us a sense of what normal practice is on this question?
I knew he was gonna answer that. That was awesome. Thank you, Paul.
So, at, you know, at this point, we've, we've talked about this recently, we've talked about this now for a few minutes. Um, pragmatically, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the problem is that we would be addressing. Um, I mean, conceptually, yes, there's a transparency in information, but I'm not sure how big an issue this is and really how much, whether this rises to the top or the top ten of our priorities list. Um, so, I mean, if someone wants to make a motion or a suggestion, we can talk about it, but...
Let me see what kind of feedback we get from the public after this discussion. If anybody really wants it and we get a large outcry for us to release portions of the packet, then we can take this up for consideration. But if nobody contacts us, or nobody contacts the town manager or, or Dawn looking for this information over the next three or four weeks, especially after Connie plastered it on the front page of the paper, um...
Without question.
And, uh, if, if there are questions and, and a desire for it, we can take this up again in the future.
But if anybody sees anything on an agenda prior to Monday's meeting and they want a copy of it, we don't take ten days to get the stuff out. Very rarely do we take ten days. There might be a reason for it, but somebody calls up and asks for something, you got nothing to hide, here you go, have, have at it.
Mary?
Um, my guess is that many people don't even know there's a packet that's presented before the meeting to the selectman. And even if they do know that there's a packet, they don't know that it's available to them if they ask. Um, I know as a, a person who does presentations in front of you, I have not ever asked for your packet. Sometimes I have called Mark to say, what's, and if I'm on the agenda, what are you, what are you thinking of putting in the packet? But as an example, tonight, I wasn't aware of what Mark had in the packet, otherwise I could have given him the, the corrected copy from the meeting. That's just an example. So perhaps one thing that could be done, back to the transparency issue, is just, and Connie Sartini may help this in her news story, is to let people know that there is a packet and if you'd like a copy of it in advance, you can call the selectman's office. Uh, I mean, we are talking about having critical conversations in our community and people, people being more well-informed, then they could come to the meetings as well-informed as you are with the latest packet. And I know, I, I might request packets and then, I have to say, in the past, I really didn't think that was my business or that I had any right necessarily to even look at the packet.
Connie, you have a concern?
This is something that you've been, uh, Connie Sartini, if you brought it, I'll have someone who obviously knew that, but I'm not sure. It's never gonna be brought out, I'm not sure of cooperation, any kind of house support or information from any of them. And I appreciate it. And this may be something my life is sort of full, people, you know, we're doing information as opposed to push, those described as getting data out. I don't want ninety block schools to believe, so, um, thank you for your cooperation with these statements, I appreciate it.
That will continue.
Josh?
Um, I just wanna point out another thought that came to me. If the select board starts doing this, that is, putting the packet out, does that mean the community therefore expects that every committee will be putting their packages out? Now, we, now we become a paper factory and the administration of, and I've worked with systems such as Bruce described and, and they're very good, but they're generally on a team of people that are working on a project. And when the project's over, that thing just gets archived and, and, and it's over. Where, what we're talking about here is people would have to wanna call in and say, gee, I don't wanna receive that anymore. And somebody administratively would have to pull them out, or it could be automated if they, if they, you know, it depends how much you wanna spend on the, on the, the system, but that's also a consideration here that I, I think we should think about because it really does create a significant amount of work administratively to, well, be the administrator of that system. So...
So, um, I would just, I think Bruce's suggestion that, uh, a conversation with the IT department might be useful in that and, and with the board's permission, I would like to have that conversation with, with Mike Chason, um, to explore, because a couple of years ago, I know, um, the board, before I was on the mem-, before I was a member of this board, had repeated requests for some sort of notification, some sort of email notification and, um, and that got created and I think it's been quite successful. So like I said, you can, and maybe not everyone knows this, but you can go on the town website to, I think it's called the Control Center or the Meeting Center or something, you can sign up to get notifications if you want them of when, um, and you can do this for any committee in town, when a document is posted to the website, when an agenda is posted to the website, when there's been a change to an agenda for that particular, um, committee. And, um, it was, I know it was asked for repeatedly, it took a while, and then all of a sudden it happened and it works very smoothly. I know a number of people who rely on it and, and use that system. And it doesn't take any administrative time. So I guess I, I personally would like to get a little bit more information. It's not my intention to burden anybody with, with more work than is necessary, but if there is an easy way for us to move in the direction of releasing certainly more of the information, maybe the stuff that has, is not likely to change, um, and, and to inform people that there is a packet. And, and in fairness, John, I don't believe that most of the other committees in town have the kind of, and the volume of and the depth of information presented to them before meetings that we do. Um, and I think the stuff that we are discussing may be, um, of more important, of more significance and more important to more of the population than, than others.
Having served on three elected positions over the last twelve years and dozens of committees, let me tell you, you go to a planning board meeting and the pre-reading is a binder of about three inches.
Right. I, I understand that, yes.
Yes, absolutely. Because it's full of drawings, it's full of all kinds of things. So let's not oversimplify, uh, what the burdens are in other groups where we haven't resided and walked in those Indian moccasins.
That, that is true. I did have a family member who did that, so I know. Um, but correct me if I'm wrong, a lot of those, uh, plans and all, there's, there are separate, uh, requirements for where they have to be publicized beforehand.
I don't know what that means.
Can we just give it a month and see what the public has to say? And if we need to revisit this, we will. I mean, I suggested about fifteen minutes ago. It's nine o'clock at night, we have other things to cover and I think we beat this rug pretty clean tonight.
I'm willing to move on, just to suggest... I will report back to the board if I get inundated.
Can you guys just let us know if there's a sudden...
Yep. And please let me know if you get inundated.
Yeah.
And that doesn't mean the same person calling thirty times.
All right.
Let's make a little joke, I'm sorry.
So the, the next item on our agenda, equally scintillating, is the select board email address. Um, currently, we talked about this a little bit last week, the last meeting, I think. Currently on the webpage for the town, there is one selectboard@townofgrattan.org email address. It's clearly called out that that comes in to the town manager who responds to things that are within his purview. He shares those requests and responses with us. I don't think it's a, a tremendous flow of information back and forth. Um, and then there are, with our pictures or the space for our pictures, all of our individual email addresses are there. So that if someone wants to reach out to one, one of us or one at a time, they can do that. Um, part of the concern in the past around the select board email address has been inadvertently creating kind of open meeting law violations or, or snafus, um, when we all get excited and start responding to things. So, um, I think we, we had tabled this to this week so that Josh could be here and partake of this conversation.
One thing I wanna point out, Allison, before you get into that, is, um, Becky had pointed out on the town manager's page, and I believe we corrected that.
Yeah.
Where's your picture done, Dunbar?
I lost it.
You lost your picture?
It's with mine, it got lost too.
Yeah.
Dawn and I'll go together and get a picture.
Get a picture taken, Dawn.
All right.
Yeah, thank you for making that change, Mark.
Yep.
That's certainly better.
Um, so I, I don't, I don't know, Becky, I don't know who, I have no current concerns with how this is put forth or handled, so I'm not sure what we're going to talk about.
We've talked about this over the years at, at various different times. And I think that the one way, if we were to make a change that I would deal with, uh, or how to deal with this, is that there's been concern in the past that why is the town manager reviewing stuff that is coming to the select board intended for the select? And the way I look at it, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of the information is pretty routine and up is bailiwick and things that he can address right away. I think the only time it would ever be a situation that might not work would be is if the email concerned the town manager. So as a way of dealing with that, maybe we could put something in the information page for the select board for contacting us that would say, if this concerns, uh, the town manager and you don't want him to read the email, then send the, the email will get sent to the chair of the board of selectmen, or the select board at the town.
Doesn't that do it right there? It's pretty clear in red. You send something to selectboard@townofgrattan.org, it's coming to the town manager.
Right. But I think, it's, listening to what Josh just said, I, I think there are times when someone may want to contact us, um, and for whatever reason, and this isn't personal to you, Mark...
I understand.
That they want to contact us with a comment about the person in the town manager's role so they don't want that email to be read by the town manager. And rather than suggest that they write to all of us individually, perhaps it should say, like what Josh just said, uh, if you're, if you have a concern about the town manager or you don't want your email to be read by the town manager, please contact the chair whose address is below. I think that, that would be a good addition.
Could that person not send it to each select board member or all five or three or...
We've gotten into trouble over the years...
Well, they certainly could. But, but the answer is yes, they certainly could. Um, if they copy us all, we're still in, we, we can't, we have to be really careful about responding. Um, and didn't, i- is there some policy about...
We have a policy in terms of responding, um, to individual members of the public as an individual board member. And, um, I unfortunately was caught up in some drama a number of years ago over a situation like this and as a result of that, um, we put a policy together. So I guess all I'm saying is, is that if there is a concern and somebody wanted to address an issue about the town manager, and again, Mark, this isn't about you, it's about whoever occupies the town manager's position, that by saying, uh, if you want it done confidentially, uh, then you should send your email to the chair of the board. As simple as that.
So, so if we add to the red section...
That's in our policy.
If we add to the red section something that says, if you prefer to bypass the town manager, simply email the chair, I mean...
Yes, that would be great. I think that would be fine.
A simple line.
Well...
I think that would be...
I don't think bypass is right for right.
So we're advertising, we're advertising. Why have a town manager?
Nobody's saying that, Mark.
No, Mark, it's not personal.
It's hard for it not to be taken for granted. I have to be honest. Select board member or send them email or, but then where are you gonna make the phone numbers and the email addresses and available for people?
Understood, I mean, I, I think it...
You know, we could modify those pages where it now shows the term of office and who it is and who's a member and who's a chair. That's a piece of software that's been around quite a while, uh, and I don't know how malleable it is, but, um, assuming it is, you could add those, that information into that little matrix, contact information.
Are you talking about this page that's on the screen, John?
Beg your pardon?
Are you talking about the page that we're seeing on the screen? I'm not sure.
No, I'm talking about a page where you go and you look up select board and it shows all our names.
Right there.
Well, this is it. This is it. This is it.
Right.
And that's what I was suggesting last week, that where it says contact information and then it shows email is the select board, you know, I think it would be not, it would be useful, it would be helpful to say, you can also contact the individual members, see their emailed addresses below.
We can add that, that's simple.
But I think the piece that Allison just suggested up there in the red, if, it, something that says if you wish to confidentially, you could, you can con- contact the chair confidentially directly at her address.
I don't think the word confidential needs to be in there at all.
Or whatever it was you said. I, I mean, I think if, just like I had said before, if, if putting a note that individual contact addresses are below takes care of it, I, again, I, personally, I feel like we're addressing a problem that doesn't exist.
Yeah, you may also, you may also contact select board members at their individual email addresses which are listed below. You could say that in the red.
Are you guys comfortable adding that?
Can you just, can you add... Can you just, can you add that to the red?
That will solve the issue right there.
It could use of anyone's time currently. All right.
Done.
Thank you.
See, that was easy.
So, in our packet, we have three items left. Coming out of our conversation last week are the information that we got from the Board of Water Commissioners. I talked with Mark, and I drafted a letter that you can read, around kind of my concerns, and it's a difficult situation in that the Water Commissioners are an independent elected entity of their own standing. They don't report to the Select Board, we don't issue them direction or a charge or anything else. So, my concern was in clearly letting them know that, you know, that communication is something we value, and that we're happy to help them communicate with the public in any way that we can, letting them know that it sounds like there's going to be a significant cost to remedying this situation, and that as such, we and the town manager and the finance team need to be kind of up to date as frequently as possible. And then lastly, kind of passing on the concerns that I've heard from the community around the delay in making this situation public. So, I don't know whether folks have had a chance, I assume folks have had a chance to read this, it was in our packet. I don't know what, if people want to see changes, if people don't want to send the letter, or if people do want to send the letter.
Send the other.
Yeah, Becky.
In the first paragraph, can you scroll it? I had, I did not understand that second sentence as it's written. Is it missing a word?
No.
I thought you were saying as you were informed in February, we were surprised, I thought you were saying that we were surprised that we weren't hearing about these issues until now.
So...
Is that what you meant?
To me, the way she's saying that is, as they were surprised in February, we're surprised now.
Oh.
That's how I read it. As you were in February, we were surprised, see?
Okay.
Kind of how you...
Oh, okay.
I thought that was a very, that was probably the best sentence.
It didn't, it didn't read that way to me, I guess maybe I'm weird.
I move that we authorize the town manager to send a letter to the Water Commissioners as drafted by our Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion, John, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. I would like to see included in this letter, something to the effect that asks that as they look at these different alternatives, right, they run an Excel program that makes projections, if you go with this solution, this is what the rate per gallon is going to be for the town, so that we can see what the impact is, because it's conceivable to me, if they're looking at solutions, the impact of which are going to cause people to shut off the water and dig a well, we're not going in the right direction. So, that model, as they develop this, should look at the impact to the subscribers, and then there's an impact to the town financially in these solutions, and that ought to be mapped as you look at each solution.
I can add that, Allison, with your permission.
Some words to that effect.
John, again, I, maybe I'm misunderstanding, you're talking about the impact as in the change in the reading, or are you talking about the cost?
If I increase the amount of money that the enterprise fund for the Water Department in the Town Center here, it means they have to break even at the end of the year, doesn't go to the general taxpayer. It does by default, but it's not supposed to. So, if they go and spend empty dollars, they have to go and adjust how much they charge per gallon to make their books balance.
Okay, so you were talking about the financial impact. I thought you were first talking about how much of a change in the reading for manganese they were...
No, I'm talking about the impact on what a subscriber would have to pay for a gallon of water.
Maybe I'll make the paragraph. See, this is why we get this in advance, so we can have a chance to look at it and understand.
Leave now.
Because if I have to sit in front, so I can't read it and comprehend it and listen to the conversation at the same time, it's still confusing.
The total uses...
For the next two months, we should all send Bud the packet. Get six copies a week.
Basically what John just said, that paragraph, that last one you're showing right there, it says the cost of remedying the situation, blah, 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 blah. It says, we understand that you have retained and now...
Yeah, I've retained a consulting...
No, 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 what happened, the point, oh, right there, the second sentence of the first real paragraph, they had, the cost of remedying the situation appears to be in the millions of dollars, and will likely impact the ratepayers and the community in general. To me, maybe that's not how you wrote this, to me, to me, as I read that, that means it's going to be potential shared cost between the ratepayers and the town, just like Lost Lake Water was. That's how I read it.
Lost Lake Water?
Lost Lake Fire Suppression.
Fire suppression, that was, that's a Lost Lake specific million dollars, but they couldn't afford it, obviously, by themselves, so the town, because it was a safety issue, said the right thing to do is to the community. This, what this says to me is that this is going to be expensive, it's going to, the health of the community is at stake, and therefore, it's going to be so expensive that the ratepayers probably can't do this by themselves, so the town is going to also share that, because it's just expensive and it's for the health of the community. That's how I read it. Is that how you wrote that, Allison?
Pragmatically, for me as an individual, yeah.
Then I go...
I think that's how it's going to end up personally, and I think that...
Okay, is that what you meant, though? That's how I read it?
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's how...
That's absolutely how I meant it, and I think, I mean, part of, part of the question becomes, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't know that for the school, for municipal buildings within the Water Department...
That's going to affect the rate, the taxpayers, because we pay the water bills like everybody else does.
Right, so...
So does the school department.
So, Bud, if they, if they had three columns, and they said, this is, this is the impact on the taxpayers of this solution, approximate, here's the estimate of the impact on individual subscribers to the Water Department, because many of us, if not most of us in town, are on our own wells anyway, and this is the cost to actually do what it is we want to do.
Yeah, all I'm saying is that there's going to be a number that's known for what the cost of this is, and then it says, because of all the ratepayers, it's what it will be. And then the question is, is there going to be a split?
Right.
And that, I don't think is going to be known at that time until the town deals with...
You fill it in later, but at least you've got those two...
Yeah, no, I agree, I just, I didn't hear what you said. I've heard you saying that the ratepayers, the answer is, to me, it's the ratepayers and the community equals the number, the number we will know of the cost.
Certainly that one or more of the solutions would require a tripart.
Right. I just want to make sure I understood the way that Allison wrote that.
But others won't, so, we're in sync, you and I are.
The Board has amended the letter with John's suggestion for Allison's signature. Have you guys voted yet?
Well, John and Bud's suggestions, we got it...
I amend my motion to reflect that, Mark.
Thank you.
I'll amend my second.
He amends his second.
I'm almost hesitant to ask if there's any further discussion.
Then don't.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Back to the ongoing issues list, I've covered a lot of that in our, in our weekly update. Oh, you want this iron and manganese added to the ongoing issues list, correct?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, I will do that. Just to, we've already covered a lot of this stuff here, the only thing that I want to, three things I want to update you on. Florence Roach Elementary School, we received eight applications for the designer. Myself, the school superintendent, and a member of the school committee, Mr. LeBlanc, are the three representatives who will serve on the state designer selection board. We're in the process of reviewing them. We will be going to Boston on September 17th to meet with the full board, and hopefully, either we're going to make a decision that night, or we're going to do interviews. I will keep the board in close, but that project is ongoing. Library roof repair, staging is done, they're going to be starting the repair. Highway garage renovations, the contractor is doing what he needs to do to get that done in five months. As a matter of fact, I think they are right on schedule after a month and a half into the project, which is good. There are some additional costs that I'm a little concerned about, we'll be meeting on that. The building committee is going to be meeting next Tuesday morning to review issues, but that project is moving in a positive direction as well. So, that is all I have for updates on the ongoing issues list.
What's up with the sidewalks on 119?
Nothing, I thought that project was done. The reason the Board asked me to leave that on is until I install the, after town meeting, we install the crosswalk.
The crosswalk, yeah.
Yeah, we still have cross, electronic crosswalk signals to be done here in front of the Salt and Light.
As well as...
And we have, we're going to ask the town meeting for about $14,000 to put a pair in front of the Florence Roach Middle School crossing over to the First Baptist Church.
So, that'll come off the list soon.
Okay, so that last item there?
Yep.
So, I will start by saying this is kind of informational only. I have been aware over the last few years, there's a number of ways that voting happens differently. I think ranked choice voting has been in the news. There was actually an article just in yesterday's Lowell Sun about the Lowell City Council and Lowell School Committee deliberating about different ways that their membership will be elected, and this was driven by a lawsuit for fair representation of different ethnic communities. So, that's not what's, what we, I think, need to be concerned about here, but I think we should be aware that when we vote for members of committees, there may be other ways of doing it that might, might be an improvement and might not, and I don't actually know how to evaluate that, but I did do some research. Barry had provided me some information, and the, and I have an article that I will share with, ask Mark to send to everybody, mostly just to read and be aware that there are some other ways that we might go about voting. And it, maybe at some workshop meeting, we might do some experimental ways to see what it, how they play out. It's hard to sort of understand this all just with a verbal explanation. And I'm not necessarily recommending that we make any changes at this point, but I think it's worth reading the article. The one method that we might end up at some point wanting to use is called cumulative voting. It's the easiest to understand of the several ones that are mentioned in this article. The article is by some, a nonprofit group called Fair Vote, I think is the name of them. Cumulative voting is something that a lot of people actually are probably familiar with, if you've been to workshops where you're given like five stickers, and you're supposed to place them on the things that you have the highest priority, and you can put more than one sticker on the priority. So, we did this years ago, the Prescott Committee, when we had that Saturday morning thing. So, basically, everyone has the same number of votes, so, for instance, we're going to be staffing a committee that we need to have five members, so normally, we would each choose five members. In a cumulative voting, we would have our five votes, but we could vote more than one of them for one person. So, if there were only three people you really wanted to get on this committee from the dozens who've applied, you could, you could put two votes for one person, two votes for another person, and one vote for another person, instead of one vote for five different people. I do not know whether that would result in something better or even different. That's why I think we ought to think about it, and maybe do an experiment at some point, and see what that would get us. But I will send the article to Mark, ask him to send it to the rest of you, ask you to just think about that, whether there's any usefulness for us at some point in the future.
Is this the same article that Barry sent to all of us that you're referring to? It's another one?
No, this is different. The stuff that Barry sent, I have to say, I read it several times, and I could not make sense of it, so...
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Select Board Liaison Reports. Does anyone have a report? All right. We have one set of minutes from August 12th. I don't know if anyone had any corrections or changes. If not, I would entertain a motion.
So, I did send one suggested edition. Is that in the packet? Okay, good, because I didn't bring a copy. This was on the discussion about the manganese issue, and I just thought that, so it shows up on page two of those minutes in red, Dawn put it there. The sentence is, that I suggested we add, said, "Board members asked questions about the possible solutions being considered by the Water Department, and also about the estimated cost of seven and a half million dollars." I thought that the price tag should show up in the minutes.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Very good. Very good. Then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.